Come to the City of Oconomowoc Common Council Meeting for Tuesday, January 17th, 2023. Have appropriate meeting notification been made?
Yes, Your Honor, it has.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A beautiful January evening. Let's call roll, please.
Alderman Ellis.
Here.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Here.
Alderman Mulder.
Here.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Here.
Alderman Kavieski.
Here.
Alderman Douglas.
Here.
Alderman Rosick.
Here.
Like to entertain a motion for approval of minutes for January 3rd, 2023.
Rosick so moved.
Second, Alderman Clothe.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Onto comments and suggestions from citizens. In the back of the room, there's blue cards. If you'd like to make a comment, you're welcome to make a comment to share your viewpoint with the Alderman at this time. Having no blue cards or anybody jumping up to come to the mic, we're going to move on. Like to entertain a motion for consent agenda, item 6A and B.
So move Kavieski.
Second, Mulder.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Onto committee reports. Consider act on resolution 23-R3094, awarding the biosolids contract extension. Mr. Freeber.
This is basically just a contract extension for three years for the biosolids contract that hauls our biosolids from the Truington plant and beneficially reuses the biosolids out in farm fields. The cost is six cents, six and a half cents and seven cents for the three-year contract. Otherwise, the contract stays exactly the same as it was prior to today.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Freeber? Like to entertain a motion?
Rosick so moved.
Ellis?
Second, Rosick.
Call roll, please.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Clothe.
Aye.
Onto a Plan Commission item. Consider act on the certified survey map for Paps Farms land combination, including part of parcel five of the CSM 9170 and part of parcel one CSM 11597 located at Paps Farms Boulevard. Mr. Gallo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a certified survey map before you tonight. It combines two different portions of lots into one lot. The lands are located east of the Fleet Farm store and west of the woods down there in Paps Farms. This is on the town center site. Both properties are under the same zoning, GC, that's general commercial. There's no need for a zoning change. This did come before the Plan Commission and they did recommend approval. It did go through a technical review and there was really no concerns with staff. There was the question raised on what's the purpose of this, and it's just basically to consolidate land. It breaks away the stormwater pond on one that'll someday be part of the joint stormwater district lands. So it divides some land off of that and it consolidates property so they can market this and develop it into, potentially for a sale, into one site that's 48 acres in size.
We also have the applicant in the audience. So council, if you have any questions for Mr. Gallo or the applicant. Alderman Ellis.
One thing that was brought up, I found quite interested in, was there could be an Indian burial site there. So how do we find that out? And if it is, what happens to whatever we do here?
Right. On the face of the document, during the technical review, it was determined there is an Indian burial grounds, at least cataloged, in the state records.
There is?
Cataloged.
Or isn't? I didn't hear what you said.
There is. It's documented that there was one there.
I just didn't hear what you said.
But it has been farmed for many years. So when they develop that, when a development comes in, it's on the record and it's shown on the face of the document that there is one there. They will have to do some type of research and checking to make sure that nothing is being disturbed.
And I need to apologize. I used the word Indian when I meant to say Native American. So please, I hope I didn't offend anybody.
So noted. Alderman Rosick.
So out of curiosity, Jason, what was the vote at Planning Commission on this? Do we remember? Was it unanimous?
It was unanimous.
I think it was unanimous.
Okay. And the question at the Planning Commission, or you've asked, what was the purpose of combining these? There is no purpose?
No. A commissioner asked what the purpose was. And it was, Bill Niemann was there at the time, and he said it was to consolidate this into one property for better marketing and for the future sale of this land.
So one of the things, we've had a lot of development that has gone outside of what we envisioned for that area. In the most recent iterations of debate with Journey 21, Hackney, and other developments, we've asked the property owners out there to give us some type of concept plan, master plan, something. I don't see this as a necessity. If we're going to keep going down the route of piecemealing things, the city spent a tremendous amount of time and effort to create out there. I'm not for that. So I'm going to be voting against this combination. I see no purpose for it. It's not required by law that we combine it. So I'm not going to vote in favor of it tonight.
Alderman Kavieski.
I'm in a similar mindset. We've made it clear from this council that a master plan is something that we desire to see before any further approvals of requests in this area be granted. And for that reason, I'm not going to support it. It's not, we need to understand what the vision for this area as a whole is. Based on that, what kind of recs are required, what kind of infrastructure support would be needed, and that piecemealing it out and providing variances for different things over a period of time, it puts us in a bad spot and potentially jeopardizes future development. So it's not, it's not, nothing against Paps Farms, but it is against what we've provided direction for and requests for. And I think it's what the community should expect too, is what the vision for that area is. From the time it first started to today, it's changed a lot in retail and where it was visioned for. All of those reasons make that request very valid. And if that master plan comes forward, we understand what's going on. I think, depending on when that is, that CSM would probably be granted if it's within that master plan.
And Jason, to clarify, this is to combine two parcels, not rezone them, correct?
That's correct. It's combining two lots into one large lot.
To create a larger lot that may be more saleable.
Right.
Question. Are these two lots under common ownership?
Yes.
They don't need our approval.
23645 sub 3 states on the Wisconsin statutes that they can combine lands that are commonly owned into one parcel. So they don't need us.
Good. Then that's an easy vote.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you can say no, and then they'll just do it.
But this is...
But they're trying to cooperate with you guys, I think.
If I may, they are, it's two portions of lots, so they're actually dividing land.
Okay.
It's a big remnant piece. If you have the page one...
Yeah, I got it right here.
You see the pond down below?
Yep.
They're dividing that off. So they're actually, this is not just combining two parcels.
Okay.
I agree with that. This is a land configuration and a combination. They're dividing off a piece that's shown in green on the cover of my staff report.
Yep.
And they're just taking it away from the pond that runs behind the Fleet Farm.
The question is, will they be creating a remnant parcel that does not meet our code?
No, the remnant piece is very large.
Yep. So they can do it. And so to our council president's point, they can do it.
Yeah.
They don't need us.
Adjusting the lot lines, I think they still prefer to have it on a recorded document that has a visual picture of it. And I think they wanted to show you what they're doing.
I think they're trying to, you know, work with the city to do it in a coordinated fashion.
Well, as a point of order...
Rather than just doing it by themselves.
As a point of order, I think we've got beyond legal advice. If the legal advice is they can do it without us, then why, then we don't need to be here making the vote or having the debate. If the point is that they're cooperating with us, I would contend that they are not cooperating with us because this council's made it clear on a variety of occasions, at least I have, I won't speak for all eight of us, but that we want some concept planned out there. We continue to piecemeal things. We continue to be told that things are going to progress in different things. We've run out of recs on the other side of the development, and now we're being asked to combine parcels that we're now being told we don't actually have to vote to combine. So this belays the entire point of what are we doing with this parcel out there? We've invested tax money, time, and city resources. And what we've asked the developer and what we've asked city staff to do is to come up with some kind of concept out there that we can actually go along with. Whether that means we need to do more TIF, which has been offered, whether that means actually coming up with a plan and having a debate about it and changing the design of the entire area, we're willing to have those discussions, but I'm sick of the piecemeal. So if they don't need to be here, then we should vote against it and let them do whatever they want.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
I just don't see this as a piecemeal because we're not changing any zoning. And it does, this might, by letting them, well, they don't need us, but by combining these, it might make it easier for them to come back with a master plan and let us know what's going on out there, what their intentions are.
Alderman Kavieski.
If they, if the vision for a potential buyer and a more marketable piece is a larger piece of property, then it should be reflected in a master plan that comes before this body and provides what the marketing strategy is for the remaining property. And there's, I think that's very reasonable expectation. If we decide based on law that we need to do this and we combine that land, then they will market it accordingly, right? And certain, the reason they're doing it is because they may have somebody in mind that would want a larger parcel. Great. Put it into the master plan, bring it forward to this body so we don't get stuck saying this is who's going here regardless of if it meets the infrastructure needs and requirements that are currently in place or if it needs more. All of those things that we didn't necessarily anticipate or plan for as we made adjustment to the southern portion, to your point, puts us in a challenging spot for what else can go in development based on the number of recs left. We shouldn't do that on the northern part. We want a comprehensive master plan. I don't think that's out of line. For that reason, I'm not going to support combining the property even though it's similar zoning because it will be marketed differently, which is why they're requesting it. They're going to attract different property buyers, size of building, amount of parking, all of that becomes a completely different conversation when we do the CSM.
Alderman Mulder.
Well, I share the frustration about the master plan when I was on Plan Commission and that we peeled off that piece for the UW Credit Union. I brought this up and was told straightforward that that wasn't going to happen. So I don't know that we'll be successful there or not. I don't feel like this is the place to take the stand in my, so I will vote for it, being they can do it anyway. I guess it's better to have it on record for them to potentially attract someone. But I think, I think they, the group should be a notice that we need a plan before we're going to improve the next, the next build here, that we need to know more because it is, it's, a lot has gone into this and we continue to invest more and more staff time just in doing this. And here we're wasting more council time after request after request. So I'm going to vote for it, but I share your frustration.
Alderman Ellis.
I personally would like to table this until we have more conversation. Because at the end of the day, whether we make a yea or a nay, they're going to do what they're going to want to do. So I'm requesting that we table this and look forward to more conversation with the builders.
So I have a motion to table this agenda item. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Nope. There's no discussion.
So...
Is there a called order on it?
There's no discussion on the motion to table.
But we still call roll. Call roll, please.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Nay.
Alderman Mulder.
Nay.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Nay.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Clothe.
Aye.
And it passes to table.
So the item is tabled, and so for the applicant, through legal counsel, you have the right to move forward with the consolidation and change of these two parcels. But at this point, it's tabled for a decision point from the city council. Is that a correct statement?
Absolutely.
So, yeah, I'll wait till Alderman comments.
Onto new business. Consider act on amendments to the master plan, master assigned plan for Olympia Fields mixed use development. Mr. Gallo.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Last year, the city approved design standards for the Olympia Fields development. These discuss the building's design, the landscaping, the lighting standards, and it also talked about signage. Now that the development is underway, there's been new requests and clarifications needed regarding signage. So I'm not going to go through all the changes this evening. You've received the updates. But I want to highlight three that I feel are really important that the council should be aware of, of what we're changing. Number one is the roundabout sign. Initially, you approved a sign located within the main roundabout there, right? When you enter in, that sign that was in the roundabout is being removed from the roundabout and being relocated to the entryway at Paps Farms. The Paps Road entrance, I'm sorry. Okay, not the Paps Farm. The Paps Road entrance way into the development. So this new sign will be about five feet tall, about 24 feet long. It's shown on page 69 in your packet. So I wanted the council to see it and know that you're pretty much, in a sense, approving this as part of the master sign plan. So it'll say Olympia Fields on it, and now the center of the roundabout's going to be reserved for a special feature. Number two is the LED signs, or otherwise known as digital reader boards. The update that you have before you now allows one reader board per site. These must go to the Architectural Commission, and the size is not to exceed 25% of the overall sign area. These would not come back before you, but they would go just to the Architectural Commission. That's consistent with all reader boards in the city. And then three is off-premise advertising. Typically, the city does not allow off-premise advertising signs. That's when you have something that says, you know, McDonald's with an arrow or something, you know, and it's not on the McDonald's property. These require a special exception from the Architectural Commission. There are some existing businesses out there that are asking for off-site advertising. They're more acting as wayfinding signs with arrows. These are not to exceed five feet in height, and they're shown on page 73 in your packet. If we approve these off-premise signs, at least the Architectural Commission will have a consistent model to, so all of the off-premise signs will look the same. I don't anticipate a lot of them, but there's at least one that I'm aware of that they are asking for. So we took these updated changes to the Architectural Commission back on January 4th. They talked about it at length and they did accept all of these. Any other comments, we incorporated into the document that's before you right now. Mark Lake from Wongard is here, along with Matt Maroni, to answer any questions. I asked Mark to also do a memo dated January 6th outlining all of the changes. And either him or myself could answer any questions that you might have.
Comment to council, I went to that Architectural Commission meeting and just want to compliment that commission because they also went back to the developers' agreement where a lot of time and energy was put in to the style and the look of that development. And they really went back and utilized that document to try to help us realize what this council wanted, the core look. And we saw that on not just the signage, but multiple buildings. So I just want to report that to you prior to your discussion. So I leave it open for discussion. Do you have any questions for Mr. Gallo or the applicants? Alderman Kavieski.
Specifically in regards to the wayfinding signage, you mentioned there are other property owners, building owners, that have a request for wayfinding signage. It's something that we talk about, have talked about in the past in regards to, in general topic. Is this incorporation kind of set the tone for other wayfinding? Or is there a separate wayfinding aspect to the signage policy or zoning that we have as a city? I'm just trying to, I think the more wayfinding we have, the better. The more compliant it is, the area's aesthetic should be appropriately called out in a document like this. But wayfinding in general, do we have something, is something coming?
It's a balancing act with wayfinding, off-premise advertising. You don't want too many of them because they create sign clutter. You don't want, you know, directing people everywhere, you know? We have a lot of official signs that say parking and they, those are more of a wayfinding. But this is talking about the directional off-premise advertising just for this development alone, not citywide. This, there's a lot of stuff happening to get people around this development, a lot of businesses. And I think they, they're looking for a consistency sign. This is not citywide. This is not going to become the standard. I think every situation is unique when it comes to these. So I think, you know, I don't think we have a lot of them in the city right now. We have a few, but for the most part, they're on the premise. I don't think I want to get locked in to the one that they're showing in here for a citywide standard.
Just as a follow-up, and then I see we'll have an additional comment made. While we don't have a lot of it now, as, you know, as Paps Farms continues to add elements as the second phase of Olympia maybe comes into play, some of that wayfinding may be more required or requested. So just from an overall policy standpoint, I'm glad it's being addressed here, but I was just wondering if that's, if we're going to look at something in a bigger scale or not.
It might be easier if I explain what the intent, so we agree. We don't want to clutter the site with a bunch of wayfinding signs, not the intent at all. But we do have existing property owners that are in existence that have relied on in the past, science getting people back. So the vacation owners, like the condo, you know, people on that side. And then we do have, we're going, you know, plans are putting a building in front of the existing storage facilities as well, you know? So we're just trying to be good neighbors and trying to make sure, hey, they're going to be hidden, so how do we help direct traffic to them? But we do not want a ton of wayfinding signs out there. And then, you know, I think as whatever happens to the West of us, they're going to, you know, try to have to figure that out as well as you point out, so.
Can I ask a question for Matt?
Mm-hmm.
So I, it makes me crazy when we do all these developers' agreements and we get through a lot of this. And then as soon as the project starts and the money starts getting expended and checks get written, then things want to get changed. I don't see these things as huge, major changes, but just give me, give me a really broad brush stroke of why you needed the changes. What's the big, what's the big takeaway from these changes? I mean, I look at like, we're going to reemphasize charcoal gray, you know, some of the stuff. What's the big, what's the big reason? To make this easier on you, to make it cheaper?
Well, it's not making it cheaper, honestly. I'll tell you that. So as we're going through the Architectural Committee process, right, they've really put a lot of fine eyes to this and start asking really critical questions that, you know, when we're early on the design process, you know, these are kind of concepts, hey, we think this, we think that. But, you know, as you kind of start developing the feel and the flavor of the development, then it's like, oh, yeah. And we want to treat everybody equally as well. So we don't have arguments with different property owners out there as well. So it's trying to get everybody on the same page. And then, you know, we're in the process, we have to have a few tweaks to the development agreement. We've got to have, you know, easements put in place, all that kind of stuff. So we're in the process of trying to wrap up this whole part of the project. So I think you'll see that come in coming council meetings as well, you know, kind of putting the final touches on it and, you know, get it done. And the city staff has been great. Everybody we've worked with has been really great about sharing ideas and concepts.
So what I'm hearing is you believe you're refining what was already in...
Refining, yeah. I don't think there's anything that's really a drastic change here.
Okay.
And as I've been in those meetings, I think it's costing them more money.
It is.
And the goal is to have the looks. If you think about what we're redeveloping, we're developing a strip mall, and we don't want it to look like a strip mall. And so we've said that multiple times in all that work in the developers' agreement on the style are some of these tweaks.
Okay.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Where does the electronic LED signing align with the original developers' agreement? How does that conform with our intent?
So it's another form of signage, Alderman, that, you know, people have asked about, you know, if you see it in other kind of, I want to call it newer type of developments, that you're seeing more and more of that, you know, kind of into the future. And that's why Jason's calling that out. That's truly a policy decision for you guys, if you guys want that or not want that.
So that wasn't something the Architectural Commission identified as being more aligning with our developers' agreement, something you're asking for because it's something you thought your benefits, the businesses would, you know, benefit themselves?
Well, I think we all share a common goal, Alderman. We want to try to attract the highest and best users, and a lot of them now are using those kind of signage elements in their businesses.
Because I'm trying to think of other electronic signage in the city. I can think of the car dealership, Culvers.
Yeah. I mean, it's truly a policy decision, you know, for you folks. It's, I think it'll, you know, increase the potential users coming in at, I think, the level of users that you want, you know?
Like who then? Like, tell me, like, what kind of users would, yeah, that it would, you know, that would better that area, that I would be like, oh, yeah, I should do this because it'll help the community.
Well, I think you're starting, like, the Drexel Town Square redevelopment, I think, has a couple, the corners, I think, has, so you're starting to see more of that flavor. And, you know, when we started, you know, kind of into this project, a couple people pointed to those kind of developments. It's like, hey, we want to kind of have that feel. And if, from a policy standpoint, if you guys say no, hey, it's no.
Because it's one per site right now. How many sites are there?
That's it. Well, great question. It depends on how you parcel it off, which you just had a discussion about. So, yeah. So, you know, total number of parcels out there, probably, what, Mark? Twelve? Something like that, Alderman? And I don't think you're going to have every user, I think you're going to see it's minimal number of users, but it's just an option.
Alderman Kavieski.
I appreciate the fact that this is coming up here and this is potentially the template for others, right? As according to what you kind of mentioned. It should be a bigger policy discussion. Because if it's not, and it's only applied here, the rest of the development in the city wouldn't comply with what this is. And this is being done for a specific reason, for user interaction and ease of finding. The locations that you want to get to, that is going to be something that we address in a bigger picture. And it should all have a cohesive thought behind it when it's applied, when it's not applied, how it's applied, so it's not arbitrary. You have to do it, but you don't have to do it. You have to do it, but you don't have to do it. We, I'm for this. I will be voting in favor of it, but we should be dealing with this in a bigger picture.
So Lewick, just for clarification, just this type of signage is what you're talking about? Not the whole proposal here?
Correct.
Okay.
This element is a major, in my opinion, a major shift in some of the elements associated with signage because...
Well, I have good news for you then. The EMC standards that are in this are exactly the same citywide. They just weren't mentioned in the earlier version that we had. So they added EMC's, Electronic Mess... So they added EMC's electronic messaging centers as a type of allowed sign. So it's the same, one per site, 25%. That's the same as what anyone else could, could get in the city.
What do you mean by 20%? What does that mean? 20% of the site?
Well, initially, I, I brought to the architectural commission, why don't we just do a, a straight square footage? And they said, no, let's be consistent with the other signs in the city. It's 25% of the sign area, so. We have allowed up to, like, a ground sign up to 50 square feet. So 25% would be 12.5.
Could it be LED signage?
It could be LED, three by four. So if you look at a QuickTrip sign, it's a very small little digital reader board box. That's why it's a percentage of the overall size. And that's in here at 25%.
Alderman Mulder.
Well, that, that's great information. I see no reason to encumber this development when we don't, when we have a rule that applies everywhere else, so.
It's like, I don't get why that wasn't really spelled out and why we're spelling it out as a different change right here that we're making.
It's significant, but it is that.
Yeah, it's kind of instrumental. So, so you're saying every site right now in the city commercially can have an electronic sign?
Right, before this, this couldn't, so it's a change.
Alderman Rozak.
Yeah, the point, the point is, is I, I think when we developed originally these standards, we, whether we consciously or not, didn't want the flashing LED signs like you see at a QuickTrip or Culvers, right, or the car wash. I'm not convinced I want that change here either. I think we were hoping, and I think mostly you guys have gone to this kind of upscale look, and I, I think we kind of want to keep that. I don't know that flashing LED signs on every, in the way it reads right now, to attach to a main building, I don't know how that's defined in the rest of that, because we don't have, I don't think, the full section here, but. So a main building, they said there's 12 parcels, so there could be 12 flashing LED signs along all these buildings, potentially along the entire strip of 67 on a main building in a separate parcel, flashing LED signs. Come and get a smoothie, come and get a coffee, come and get a Panera bagel, all along 67. I, I don't, I don't think that would look good. And I don't know that we can tell them where to put the sign right now based on this. It could be where the other sign is and then the LED underneath, so. I think we were hoping for a, a, a little bit nicer looking of development, not with flashing LED signs. So I'm going to, when we're done with the debate, I'm going to move to cut that one portion out. The rest of it I have no problem with, so.
Alderman Ellis.
I'd like to recommend the master sign plan of the Olympia Fields mixed use development for the change.
So you're making a motion, sir?
Making a motion, that is correct.
As presented.
As presented, yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Alderman Douglas. Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Page 68. So with the electronic signs, is the prohibited sign types of pulsing or moving still within that? Or are we taking that out? Do you say like you have it scrolling, right, or constantly changing? But that says prohibited.
To me, pulsing and moving on, on page 68 under prohibited signs is a sign that actually like rotates in the air or something that's not electronic. Changing message is something different.
Like a long script, just keep going, that doesn't consider moving?
Right, I, I don't consider that a digital sign because we do cover digital signs under other sections. So maybe that's an interpretation, but I'm not really quite sure what the pulsing was referring to, but.
I know exactly what it's referring to. Pulsing, fine. It's bloop, bloop. Come and get a coffee, come and get a coffee, come and get a coffee. I mean, however it's, whether it's an LED or whether it's.
Well, could pulsing also be something they have on a bank? So you have the time and then it switches to the temperature?
That's not pulsing.
I'm just asking.
That's switching. Now, if it was the weather, over and over and over again.
I mean, Matt, that's what you're saying you don't want, is the pulsing, and it's prohibited here.
No, we don't want electronic, a bunch of electronic signs.
It's prohibited. For clarification, Jason, in the way the, this is written, is pulsing accepted or prohibited?
It's prohibited. But electronic boards may be approved by the architectural commission and they, they look at how the functions of it, how, you know, how the size, the location, where it's being placed, the overall height. Now, we can't regulate content on the sign, but, but they can regulate size and location and.
So we have a motion and we have a second. Do we have any further discussion? Do we have clarification, Mr. Rozak?
Clarification of the motion, yes.
Okay. Call, call, oh, go ahead.
Can you read the motion again then, please?
That's a, yeah, clarification.
It's as written, but Kevin, go ahead.
I made a motion to approve the recommend amendment to the master sign plan for the Olympic Fields mixed use development.
As written, no changes.
As written, that's correct, yes.
And do you still have a second, correct? Any further discussion? Call, roll, please.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper. Alderman Kavyevsky.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rozak.
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Aye.
Okay, on to our next item, Consider on Resolution 23-R 3095.
Sorry, I don't like LED signs.
Disallowing claim for damages at 113 West Third Street. Myilik.
Thank you. So the city received a claim for damage to a garage due to trees or shrubs rubbing against the structure. We did turn the claim into the insurance company who did an investigation. And basically what they look at is, did the city ever receive prior notice that these trees were causing damage or were close to causing damage or they were in the, in the way? And the answer to that is no. The city didn't receive any prior knowledge, so therefore the city's not negligent. We're not responsible for the growth of trees, but if it were reported to us that it was too close to a building and we didn't take it out, that would be a different story. So once it was reported, the city did go take those trees out, but the insurance company looks at it, is the city negligent or not? They find the city not negligent and therefore recommend disallowing this claim.
Questions or comments for Lori?
How much was the claim? Was that in there?
I can tell you, I haven't. I would say it was like $14,000.
The claim was for $30,000 to $45,000.
Comments or questions from council?
So move, I'll move to disallow the claim as provided.
Second, Kavyevsky. Any further questions or comments? Call, roll, please.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavyevsky.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rozak.
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Aye.
On to our next item, Consider Act on Resolution 23-R 3097, directing the legislative work on a solution to increase funding for the shared revenue program for all Wisconsin cities, villages, and towns. Mr. Fry.
Thank you, sir. Two weeks ago, Jerry DeShine, DeShane from the League of Wisconsin Municipalities was here talking to us about shared revenue, the issues with it. As part of the process that night, we did have a draft resolution for Alderman to look at, comments were provided. Those comments were incorporated into the document that's here tonight. In general, we're asking the state of Wisconsin Legislature and the governor to look at this and come up with a solution. As we know, that shared revenues have decreased significantly over the last 20 years for the group of people that the mayor had mentioned, the cities, villages, and towns, going from $938 million down to $753 million. So it's very significant for all of us. So that's why we're asking to take this action tonight.
Any questions or comments from council? Alderman Rozak.
Yeah, very briefly, I had set, sent a set of minor changes and, and one of them kind of made it in, but the, the very simple one did not, for whatever reason, back to you guys. So I'm going to recommend that we approve this with this, two, two additions, very simple. At the very title of it, resolution directing the legislature and governor to work on a solution. And then the very last, second to last, now therefore, we hereby call on the legislature and governor to work on a solution. That's got to be, you know, both of these groups have to work on it together. And that would be my only addition. All the rest of the changes look good to me.
I like second. So that's in a form of a motion, correct?
Yes.
We have a second from Alderman Shellpepper. Any further discussion? Call, roll, please.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavyevsky.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rozak.
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Aye.
On to our next item, Consider Act on the Adoption of Resolution of Necessity 23-R 396 for acquisition of easements and restrictive covenants for parcel number OC OC 061498004 owned by Fleming Investments LLC located at 1400 Summit Avenue.
Sure. So we entered into a very comprehensive agreement with our partner, Wongard, to redevelop the Olympia Fields. Part of that agreement said that we will all work together, try to make this thing work. And part of the agreement, we knew that when the whole situation was formed, when it was all owned by Basari, there were all these archaic restrictions, covenants, easements that, once we redeveloped this, would not make any sense. We had private roads, we had private utilities, we had all this stuff there, and the whole idea was here to clean that up, to make it work. Those covenants could have possibly created situations where somebody in the development could block something that happened a half mile away. And we needed to be putting some of our infrastructure in on some of the areas that were protected by these, or arguably, I would not say protected, but arguably could infringe on somebody else's concerns as it relates to easements, covenants, and restrictions. The Fleming property, which I think you're all familiar with, is situated in an area where there was a private road. We had put in a brand new, beautiful road. And right in the former private road, we put our stormwater facilities there. There's a pond right in that area that is subject potentially to a restriction. And we need to get to that. So in concert with the agreement that provides that we will assist in making sure that this whole thing can happen, and to make sure that we are not sued as it relates to any impingement on that covenant restriction and easement, we've set up this action that is before you tonight, which would be to take by eminent domain any rights that the property owner could have as it relates to those easements and restrictions. You have previously authorized and directed that we obtain an appraisal as to what potential impact there could be financially for this property owner, right? We got the appraisal. The appraisal says that not only is there no impact financially on this property owner, but in fact, the property owners benefited financially by us eliminating those restrictions. And it happens in two ways. One, they were obligated under the covenants and restrictions to pay annually for the upgrade and maintenance and all of the stuff related prorata with all the other people for the upkeep and maintenance of that road, which ranged from $810 a year to, I think the, the biggest was $3,600 per year. Could be bigger in the future because of the fact that at some point in time you have to completely, you know, redo the road. So that eliminates that. And over a 10-year period, that could be $12,000, as it says right now. Number two, they are benefited by the fact that this project is going on and they are going to be able to get greater rates for rental from their tenants, which has actually happened. Because they have a new tenant coming in, I can't wait to go in there, because it's a, what are they, smoothies, I love smoothies. And evidently, we don't have the actual information, but it was like a lot more per square foot than what they're getting now. So what we're doing right now is keeping in concert with what we had agreed to in the contract with, with the developer and our partnership, and it's a first step to wiping these out. After this, we give them notice. They have a right by law to get their own appraisal. They get 60 days to get that appraisal. They can bring it back to us and we'll consider it then. We, we obviously, as a municipality, have to treat property owners and their rights very, very carefully. It's in the constitution of the state of Wisconsin. We will find out whether or not they can get an appraisal that says that they're being injured. We'll carefully analyze that. If there is any cost associated with that, and all the costs associated with all of this is on Wongard because we have an agreement with them that says they're paying 100% of the cost associated with this process. And so we'll find out, we, we have to treat the property owner just like every other property owner in the city right. So we'll find out what we get back and we'll deal with it then. But this is the first step in the process. So I recommend, consistent with our agreement, consistent with what is right for this whole development, that you approve this.
Questions or comments for Attorney Riffle? Like to entertain a motion?
Rozak, so moved.
Second, Kavyevsky.
Second, Ellis.
Any further comments? Call, roll, please.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavyevsky.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rozak.
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Aye.
On to our next item, any, we have any staff reports, Mr. Fry?
One from the clerk, sir.
Great.
Thank you. Just a brief staff report regarding, the city will be having a primary election on February 21st. So in-person voting, as it's done for every election, happens the two weeks prior to the election in the city clerk's office. And for this election, it will start on Tuesday, February 7th through Friday, February 17th. So in an effort to offer more in-person voting hours to our citizens, the city will be extending in-office voting, starting on Monday, February 13th. That's the second week of in-person voting through that Friday, February 17th. And the hours will be from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. So we've, for the. So we've, for those five days, we are extending the hours, so I just wanted to report that to you.
And what are the hours the week prior?
They are 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM.
Any other staff reports? Nope, that's okay. Comments from Alderman? Alderman Kavieski?
What?
Good job.
Just assumed.
I did wear a tie today.
Nasty.
No, we actually talked about it on Wednesday. You were going to give a little update on fentanyl. So actually, it was... No, I thought it was a great idea, so.
Fentanyl?
No, like, update.
So, thank you for the reminder. So, we have had meetings previous between the city, the county, the school district, our police department, and Western Lakes Fire District, to formulate some action plans collectively within the city to create more awareness, create action, and take a more proactive approach with fentanyl. We will be conducting more meetings coming up, and as the county has developed a toolkit, and those items will be presented to the city and the school district and all the appropriate departments. Last year, there was over 70,000 deaths nationwide associated with fentanyl-laced substances. There is no community that is protected or isolated from this. I appreciate the mayor's willingness to engage in the efforts. There are banners in rotation right now in the city to help create that awareness. That banner is representative of a billboard that's actually in Times Square, developed by SOFA, and it's America's new F-word campaign. Fentanyl is that F-word. I look forward to continuing those efforts while I'm on council and off council, and I appreciate the opportunity to make that comment and provide that support.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but hopefully that toolkit will, and more information will be available in March, so our tentative plan is to have a committee of the whole component on this agenda sometime in March, correct?
Correct. So, along with that toolkit, there's other materials, such as the bag that we had there, which will allow you to put any prescription or non-prescription drugs into that, neutralize that, and dispose of it. I'm sure we'll be talking about Narcan and other, other substances that can help prevent and bring back those who are going through those life-altering or life-ending situations.
Great. Thank you for your work. Alderman Ellis.
Do we have any updates on the 67 tunnel, the bike tunnel?
I haven't spoken with them recently, but it's in their high priority, and we should hopefully, I can try to get you an update for the next council meeting.
We'll get one sent out.
But it's, it's always been on the priority, the funds are there, the funds have been released, the RFP is completed, and I believe they approved it as well. And it actually came in under what the last one did, which was a nice surprise. So it's more about the timing for the counting, but we'll try to get you an update.
Yeah.
Thank you. Cool. Alderman Rozak.
Briefly, thank you for the extended voting hours in February. I hope that we do something more expansive in April. The numbers I was provided prior to the meeting from Mark were that, you know, our early voting numbers in person were kind of low, but they're also low because I think no one knows that we're going to extend the hours, and the old hours were terrible. You know, we eventually moved our clerks' time from 5:00 to 4:30, reducing the amount of time someone can come in and early vote during that period of time. A lot of people are taking advantage of that, they're doing mailing as well, but I think it's a good thing, and I hope that we're able to expand that in April to maybe even longer hours, seven or eight, like other communities in and around southeastern Wisconsin do. My last comment has to do with the debate we just had for Pats Farms. I'm pretty sure that the Pats Farms developers have their own attorney who gives them advice on what they need to file or not file with the city. And I think we, as a city, should refrain from providing legal advice to a developer on the council floor. I think they need to decide what is appropriate to file or not file, and we should vote on or not vote on it. So, don't anyone take any offense to that, but those guys are big boys, they're multimillionaires, they're developing huge parcels of land. I think they can make their own decisions on what they need to do. That's all I have.
Any other comments from Alderman? With no comments from the mayor, I'd like to request that we go into closed session, but I first need to read it. So, closed session, we'll be going into Room 3, per Wisconsin state statute, 19.851E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other special public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session.
What are you laughing at? Him?
Specifically to discuss consideration of expenditures for the amendment of TID number 7, Olympia Fields. Like to entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second, Kavieski.
Eber? Audience, we're going to go into the other room for a closed session, then we'll come back in here.